I was counting my check marks and I was just missing it. I got a seven. Oh, no, I stuck it back. I thought I had one back. I was calling out my smart. It was they. Don't think somebody was. And then you guys were saying. My. We were talking about. I was counting my check marks and I was just missing it. Okay. Now. Stand. More. No. So. So. I wouldn't read all that. I'm just reading this. I'm like. It's ministry world. That's what it is. I heard what I said. I see there's. I saw that one. This is after. She's been a base. Because. Yeah. But we're here to see. I have to stay in a broadcast room. I kind of remember. Right. We're getting. I'm gonna get a bit between the next two. At seven o'clock before I can start. We'll say the flag first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Jerry Zelke, Crane Township.
Here.
Lori Lucas, Holloway Township.
Here.
Stan Harmon, Brown Township.
Excuse me.
Travis McGarvey, Emerald Township.
Here.
Dave Klein, Carroll Township.
Here.
Paul Ludwig, Blue Creek Township.
Here.
Barry Root, Fallding Township.
Here.
Dan Combers, Fallding Two, here. Lane Pickle, Washington Township.
Here.
Dave Burge, Fallding One.
Here.
Matt McDugall, Allen Village.
Here.
Caleb Miller, Harrison Township.
Here.
And Harry Weed, Fallding Two.
Here.
And the vacancies are Latty Township, Benton Township, and Jackson Township.
Okay. Um, introduction to guests, and I'm gonna just let your people introduce yourself and go run through here and start with Joe.
Joe Ruckhart, Polk County Press, here.
Jason Laner, Polk County Sheriff.
Lisa McClure, Polk County Area Foundation.
Bryce Steiner. Whatever.
Whatever we want you to be.
Caleb Miller, county council. Okay. And news reporter.
Okay. Mark, Marcus Murray, your county commissioner.
Cheryl Strance.
Joe Straskey, Polk County citizen.
Claudia Pickle, Kavanaugh. Karen Wyler, Associate Associate.
Oh. My. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda, Caleb Miller, this is his first meeting, he talked to us back at the banquet in September. This is his first time being able to come, so we're gonna do the oath of office. Dave will be able to do that in some time. He can read it, I guess he can do this.
Am I right?
Yeah, so I'm right.
Hi, Caleb Miller.
Stand up, please.
Stand up. Stand up. Hi, Caleb Miller, this is Al Sweare, I support the Constitution of the United States and constitute the state of Ohio. Basically, and of course, it's discharge of and reform of all duties incumbent upon me and all having powers, central, elected member, according to the best of my knowledge.
Will you whack that just a second? Any motion to.
Call it in. Shit.
So I'll say. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that. I need to reverse those two lines. Uh, secretaries, we're teaming up with Gordon, you can call all of them on the back of the agenda tonight. I actually took them into the last meeting. So I need to read that.
Polk County Republican Center Committee Minutes, Tuesday, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, at the Black Swan Feature Center. Chairman Zelke called the meeting to order at seven oh five K M. Members present were Jerry Zelke, Lori Lucas, Travis McGarvey, David Klein, Matt McDugall, Harry Weed, and Dave Burge. Lori Lucas moved to appoint Director Kraus McGarvey to fill the open Emerald Township Central Committee position, and Dave Burge seconded the motion. It was approved. There was no secretary report. Treasurer Pickle was not able to attend, but sent his report. General fund, four thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Political fund savings, twenty-six seventy-one. Bills for West Bend News, fifty-five hundred and thirty-two. Slate card mailing was three thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Slate card newspaper ad was a hundred and ninety-six dollars. Fallding Progress State Card Newspaper Ad was two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Dave Klein made a motion to pay the bills, asked for sending in Dave Burge seconded the motion. It was approved. Balance of general fund after bills was six hundred and forty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Jerry Zelke reported that three candidates, Harvey Hyman, Shane Lee, and Russ Herman, have requested the questionnaires' information to the governor's office, which are due on November thirtieth. Jerry is waiting on Michael Workamp's resignation letter to move forward. If the committee receives more than three applications for the open judge position, the committee will need to select only three before sending to Columbus. Chairman Zelke gave update on the dismissed position, and the only person to contact him so far has been Lisa McCall. Jerry Zelke set up a nominating committee to review the applications for judges for commissioning in more committees. Lori reminded members of the Christmas party at six P M., December the first, forty-two, at the Senior Center. At seven forty-four, a motion to adjourn meeting was made by Lori Lucas and seconded Friday, first. Meeting adjournment was approved. Next regiment, scheduled meeting will be Thursday, January fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Very busy, your day, so we had to talk about that. First thing we said. Second.
How was that good?
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Okay, I guess we're ready for voting.
Well, last month, we paid quite a few bills and took our checking account down. Our current balance, we did have a fifty-dollar deposit in the last month, so our current checkbook balance is six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighteen cents. And our savings account balance, political funds, twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Then I also have a bill here for approval.
Don't we do that? We do the bill right now?
Okay, we have the bill here for FedEx, Jerry had shipped, uh, the judges' information to Columbus. So it's a FedEx bill that we have Jerry reimbursing for thirty-one dollars and forty cents.
So make the most of it, yeah.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
They're running just too slow. Okay, moving on to the chairman's report. Update on the judge replacement. Um, I finally received Michael Workamp's resignation letter on the fall, on the fall election on December ninth. I couldn't send those to Columbus until I received that, because he was gonna be elected as of January. They told me before that they wouldn't elect a judge until after January. So the S O S office said I needed to make sure we got that done in forty-seven. So not really happy with Michael about that. Um, forever waited, but we got it finally done. Uh, I shipped the application package from Harvey and Shane and Russ, they all sent one in. Uh, so we didn't have to wait. We were supposed to, uh, to leave accounts on the twelfth. Uh, after the people I had, I kind of reviewed them and the last meeting. And, you know, we thought maybe we'd have to bring it back to committee and vote to reduce it. We had only three, we only had three. Anyway, you know, I was pleased to be able to meet through this.
Who's that?
Uh, Dave, Lori, myself. And we're gonna hear, Dave Klein, Dave. Then Lori did send me it for the end of December, around Christmas time. Uh, his resignation letter, he said he wanted, he had something wrong and he had legal to figure out. Trying to make sure he got his insurance. He had a gap in his insurance beginning of March and additional gaps. So effectively, the letter was on December thirty-first, eleven fifty-nine P M. So, um, that, that came through, so, um. I think that's really all I had. We, you know, I've been trying to, I sent things out here on Christmas when we started doing things. Get ready for tonight. Um, to get everybody that I have on this. We'll see how this goes, I mean, goes from there. Um, I don't, the judge thing, I'm not sure when they're gonna make that appointment. Sometimes it takes a long time. They have not called me and asked any questions lately. They come, they needed, I said, might God do something, but unfortunately, if you send an attachment, the letter for it gets blocked. Didn't approve, so I had to resend it. Somebody else in the office has really got this. The piece of cheap weed accounts for the governor's insurance got blocked. Just sending stuff in, so. But we got that worked out. And we're also prepared with the office. Originally contacted, we were packing information and questionnaires. Me, just for everybody else who did, uh, and I know Lori and Dave, you guys look at all this stuff. There was a lot to fill out for that. I mean, I don't know what you guys thought, it was, it was intense. I mean, you basically signed up your life. The back of your life, yes. Yeah. So we'll see, you know, maybe, the governors, you all one person gonna make the decision, so. Uh, you know, each, each guy or each person that put their stuff in had references. My understanding is they're gonna check all those references. They're doing extensive background checks on everybody. Uh, they're going back and looking at their legal stuff. Uh, let's put it this way, it's a whole lot easier if you'd like to do a position like that than it is to do this one. Uh, it was really kind of basic, so. We had to stand up for this. Think all I have on that for now, I'm sorry my voice didn't get dry, so. Lori, I want you to go on with the ratings report and move on.
Can I ask a question on that? So when may I appoint this position, is it only for two years? Or is it for three years, or is it for the entire term?
Now, I think, my understanding is.
Yeah, it's part of the.
Hello?
It's probably not a star term. So whoever picks the last one.
It's a full term?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think it, it, this term is six years.
Alright.
But I think it's only gonna be for two. If I understand what I read. And I'll have to go back and double check that, but I, I don't think it's gonna be for the whole six years.
Joe, do you have any insight on that? On the, you know, shit. Nothing official, but after twenty-twenty-four, he'd have it run.
Right.
I was thinking it was like when that next county election comes around.
Right, right. Yeah. Just, just, I think the next time we have those people, that group of people running, that's the understanding I had from the S O S.
The judges have a little bit of treatment on filling positions versus the county positions, so. Um, that's my understanding based upon.
Yeah. I haven't worked on that project for a while. Back with people who are asking about the position, the people to contact, Harvey and Shane and, and Russ. Uh, I checked that out. I know, I remember now, it was, it was, because I had to send it back to them, so. Before I got the new salaries and what's, you know, potential salary was going to be submitted to that. And, and so, uh, you know, and I guess I checked that to Texas over the night. I also talked to Frank O'Rourke too, uh, about that. Yes, uh, it was twenty-four.
So with that being said, you'll have to file in December, like this year.
Right.
Because Brian will be on.
Excellent. So. In twenty-twenty-three.
So that's when, oh, like, what was on the line against Sheriff Brown? He decides. Why, actually, there's a picture. Yeah, it's up there.
Okay. Any other questions? Those are just, moving forward, just like I say, it takes time. And for some counties, say, they happen in months, or, um, counties say it takes two or three. And then for the financial benefit, now we must buy money to have the, the travel judges go in. You know, um, you know, cost of liability to have that happen. The judges from office staff that I've talked to, you know, they've been getting along pretty good. It's not as easy. I've had a couple attorneys call me, you know, they're just gonna get, uh, you know, the practice of the courts, because it's not as easy to get stuff done when they're not here all the time. And so, uh, so we'll just see. Like I said, just a little bit of time. Just gotta through the process, the government needs to list what we actually have to do. Just the details. Joe, I copy those. Okay. Lori?
Okay. Um, I called the commissioner's office and the God, um, the, uh, extension office for our, our banquet this year, and it's gonna be the twenty-third, you know, the same time it is every year.
For the.
September. Yep. And what I am hoping is that we have kind of a feel for who is running in the primary next year for the Republican to run against, uh, Sheriff Brown. So we can have Senate candidates come in. And so, well, hopefully that, and I'm gonna start right away, uh, looking for a speaker, so. But we, the women did not decide to do anything this year, um, like we did last year with the meet the candidate long, because obviously there's something happening this November. So, um, there won't be a special, we'll just have the fair tent, and hopefully people sign up and, because we made a lot of money this year at the fair tent. So, well, precedent candidates too, might also, I don't know how lucky we would be though. We can always hope.
Dave, man.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Before you move into the next, I wanna ask if there's anybody that wants to go into executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion to do that?
I'll, I'll move with the governor, executive session.
And all favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes?
I'm just saying. I was saying.
Okay, um, we came out of executive session. Uh, we're gonna vote, uh, on, uh, three people that were candidates. Uh, one candidate has been, uh, disqualified, uh, because they basically have never voted in primaries, so we don't know if they're Republican or Democrat. Uh, two of the candidates have voted in the past, or, and then one has voted in the last election. Uh, the other two have not voted, um, in the primaries, uh, this past year. So, uh, but they're still, they're ours on voting rights, so. So we're gonna vote on the three names. Uh, I'm gonna open the floor up to ask if anybody has any comments they wanna make, uh, before we vote. Yeah, okay, clarify the five days. Um, there was a question early on in this process, a week ago, uh, was, and I had to call the secretary of station. I, I've talked to the secretary of state's office at least three times in the last week, uh, to talk to one of the legal council people too. Um, just to clarify a couple things. Uh, Roy's, uh, resignation was dated on twelve thirty-one, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, for effective date. Uh, my concern was this might be one day too soon. Well, I called the secretary of state's office, and since he had put on there twelve thirty-one, eleven fifty-nine P M., that, that qualifies as, as day one, uh, the next day would be day two. So as of eleven fifty-nine last night, you know, the five days were up, so. Uh, we, I thought originally we might have an issue there. Confirmation vote from the state and then Joe, Joe agrees to, that was, that was, uh, okay, so. You know, I had multiple conversations with secretary of state to do a vote of judge stuff and, and, and this process, just to make sure we got everything right, so. Uh, we didn't want a, a situation like they had in, in the finance county, so, um, that's why we didn't make any decisions in executive session. The finance county did that, got all the trouble, so I think we got everything under control, so. So, um, anybody else got any comments?
I have a question.
I'm just telling the three candidates.
Okay, yeah. Uh, go ahead. Lisa McClure, Fred Laney, and Ray.
Karzian.
Uzi Ak, okay. Okay.
You guys spell it out.
He can say it, he can't spell.
Yeah, I can. Thank you.
So there are two from Antwerp and one from, and Lisa from Birmingham.
Yeah.
Okay, my question is, actually, there are a couple. As you guys evaluate these resumes, is there any weight given to representation across the county? Have we ever had a commissioner from Antwerp?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Both of us.
Really?
Yeah. And we looked at that, I mean, when we made our decision with Clint. The reason Mike, part of the reason Mike was the commissioner was because we wanted to stay in a public school district. You know, I'd love to have somebody from Antwerp, you know, but I look at what the qualifications of the person is, and based on what I think they can do for the future of this community, that's the way I was looking at it. I think was the other people on this committee look at it that way. You know, I want, I want the best people in there to, to get us to where we need to be going. You know, you know, we were less than a hundred years together to give Linkfar money that's helped us, or we'd be in serious trouble today. And so, Lori knows that she, she handles that money, and, you know, we'd be in dire states if it wasn't for that. There was a lot of hard work we needed to do in that. And on the front end, and a lot of people, you know, don't know, all the people that were involved, and I was involved early on with Terry, East's husband and Roy, and, you know, we, we'd be in serious trouble at this county. You know, we need to move forward, we need to have a vision, and so, you know, uh, I think, you know, you know, times are tough, though, I mean, everything's possible, of course, perhaps, knows that in his department. You know, fuel's just outrageous, and so, it's, it's tough making the weapons. I know it's a challenge for commissioners to get the budget in this county, so.
So back to my question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dan, you would say that overall, the committee in general is gonna look at the resumes, consider, I mean, that's a small portion of it, as already stated regarding Mike.
Right.
Coming on.
Right. Yeah, we will.
Let me, let me add something to that. Each one of us is gonna be an individual. So we're not a collective.
Group thing.
Group thing. So some may take that into consideration, somebody else might.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more about, in my opinion, the way I know is about where and, uh, who's the best person. You know, and, you know, from that standpoint. You know, you can't, I mean, we don't make those decisions very often, fortunately. Unfortunately, we've had to do it twice last couple of years, but, you know, that happens, so, but we'll make it work, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, go ahead.
Just wondering, uh, if these other folks, they couldn't make it tonight, or they notified, or?
I had let them know that we were reading tonight.
Okay.
So. They had that information.
Where are you going?
Okay, we're gonna vote, uh, wait a minute. Travis and Dave Burge, you wanna count on the votes, please?
Hey, Jerry. Is this, is this just whoever, is this a plurality, a majority, or something else?
He was the same, go ahead, tell me.
All you do is you get a vote, if there's one person that gets more than fifty percent of votes on the first ballot, then it's over. If not, you're after all those people that don't reach fifty percent, then you've got to go once and go again.
So whoever gets a majority wins. Okay.
Well, they have deal with fifty percent.
Well, that would be a majority, so.
Yeah.
Not a plurality.
And too, just so everybody knows, some of the committee members here have worked and talked to a lot of other people, so, you know, uh, about this position, so it's not like it's just a few applicants we got to talk to a couple people. But, you know, one of the things I found was when people find out with it, timing is all, you know, most people basically, we straight up.
One extension? Okay. Okay. So. Okay.
Full votes passed.
Okay, so we have one extension. One, 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 or eleven for Lisa McClure and one extension.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Speech, that's a joy. Give your gentleman a speech.
I, I just wanted to tell you that I, I appreciate Mark and Mike for putting up with me for the last four or five weeks and asking a lot of questions. I appreciate your love of confidence. My mission statement at the foundation is dedicated to giving, growing, and distributing gifts for the betterment of people of Polk County today and the future generations, and, and that's my motto, and that's what I live by every day, so I will continue to live by that. Thank you.
Yeah, you told us.
I don't have any, uh, whole business unless somebody else has anything.
How, how long will Lisa's term be then? Will this?
It'll be the end of twenty-twenty-four, she'll.
She'll have to. Okay, she'll have to run.
Run as general elections for commissioners. So basically, she'll have to start running in the primaries in twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Which will be in March, so I'll file this in.
December of this year.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, you know, if I have someone to run, then. I just wrote it in the line, since we didn't, I'm gonna write something in the line valid.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure what I know was.
Yeah, my pledge in the minutes, it was done by ballot vote instead of, we had it set up. I was in the school board mode there, going, that's how we do things. Uh, spring election, I've asked the election board to give me who's running. Who's up for election. Uh, the mayor, county trustee.
Not. Not a mayor. Not a mayor, or is it something further?
Oh, no, it's the state's office.
Twenty-three. In twenty-three, that's what I want to call it. You were right with who you were saying, trustees, school board, and.
Oh, but they aren't.
They won't play back from beyond.
Not, not per.
Oh, okay, because when I looked at the, the S O S office the other day at the state, it said, it had the primary date for twenty-twenty-three.
That's when I was in our particular county against this conference.
Oh, we won, okay, that's right.
If there is a special election, if somebody has to put a tax levy on, they'll be paying in part.
Good, so you don't, okay, so that works better for Lori.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, we're working out, we're getting that list, we're figuring out what those are, and get that distributed if you're out there. One of the things we're working on that we didn't get done for tonight was, eventually, the plan's gonna have to be the end of the year audit stuff for the state. Uh, I wanna get a summary of that, so we can tell the candidates that are in for election this year, how much money you spent. I've asked some people questioned how much we do for candidates, and, uh, this year it's coming up to a pretty large number. Uh, I've also requested the state to tell me how much they spent from the state support committee in the county, because they did at least two flyers to all the Republicans, and those weren't cheap, I know they weren't, but I had, I was able to get all the candidates listed on those that were running the general election, so, um, that they allowed, and they put the issues on there too, but they didn't, they go with that, so there's an issue with that, gonna do it, so.
And I also think they did a lot.
Yeah, Lori, they, the women's, the women's spent close to twelve hundred dollars this year on candidate stuff, with all the events she had and stuff, so. We spent a lot of money this year, so that's what the balance. So we spent a lot of money this year, so that's why the balance is so low. But we wanted to make absolutely sure, you know, the state races were critical, you know, with the justices. Unfortunately, those got the, it'll be interesting to see who the governor appoints.
You know, did, somebody on Hamilton.
Oh, did he? Okay.
The state, the state.
The state's attorney.
Yeah, it's a guy judge, Ron Hamilton. I should give you the full, two musical performances.
He's the prosecutor.
Who?
He's the prosecutor, two years.
Right, yes. I just knew it was some justice.
Um, like the officials, anybody got their? We've, with the, one thing reports from my office this year, since it's going to be one election, is we will have a maximum one. This levy come up, there will be an increase needed. As we get started here, twenty-three, we'll work with cloudy staff to get projections in the commissioner's office to see what that would be. But our projections will exceed our revenue in twenty twenty-four or five, I think, right now. So there would need to be a slight increase in that. We'll communicate that in public if we move forward throughout the year. Other than that, everything's good, staffing's good, everything's up to par in the office right now, so.
In case you didn't hear, we had a fire for elections. And it was throwing everything in a mess. I was very unaware of what a fire does. They said way up front that smoke ruins electronics. And it does. I think everything up there is trash. Turn it on, the smoke rolls, and it goes away, so. Through the insurance, it's put all your stuff in the office. It did not get to the machines, because that's on a separate ventilation system. So it didn't, that smoke didn't get carried back there, so it didn't hurt back there, just thrown off. But anyhow, it's all backed up and running. Next week, we go to Congress, and that'll be interesting.
What was the cause? What was determined to be the cause?
Batteries fell off a shelf. That one little waste basket, probably the fire. Never heard of such a thing, but it happened.
Well, that's why roaders doesn't, and corporates don't want our batteries, just for that very reason.
Something about the new batteries, the owner, like that, like he's using a light, like.
It's the one year batteries. Any, anyone else say anything? I know you've just been throwing a bunch of stuff.
So are we.
What do you have?
Um, no, she'll have to be sworn in, the documents have to go to the state. I will get those to the election board office tomorrow. I'm gonna call it first. Yeah, we gotta sign on the paper. I have to, here, I'll put the name in.
Oh, we're.
Yeah, I wish Roy could have been here tonight, because he knew how that process worked a little bit with Clint. Maybe, I don't know, you remember Mike?
Mike, my husband, right?
How, look, we, I know, we signed off, but there was a glitch, it took weeks.
Because Columbus was still working from home, and so the paperwork.
Oh.
Mike Hoover, and to Joe, that opinion that they could actually, Lloyd and Mark was able to. And that was our bridge until the paperwork made this.
Right. Well, I know I read something in Vice Code, the commissioners could do an interim commissioner.
Saying you have a temporary appointment until these people, they were sworn in, or is nominated.
Okay, so we'll finish that table work up tonight, so I can deliver it to there tomorrow. So to the election board office, and then we'll see what else they need to have. But I'm, I'm gonna call it first thing in the morning, so to make sure where we're gonna go tonight, we're gonna get this stuff, so. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you guys got something else.
We'll do it here.
I'll say it.